Okay, I'm sure more people will be joining us, but why don't we call this meeting to order? This is a select board focused meeting about. Now we have a little bit of business due first. Let's call this meeting to order, roll call vote.
Okay, Ms. Ackerman.
Present.
Ms. Bates.
Present.
Mr. Dane.
Henry, you're on mute.
I'm present and not mute, thank you.
Ms. Escobedo.
Present.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, present.
Right. We have the consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent agenda, which includes a gift acceptance from Martina Lad, a gift of $3,117.91 to the Recreation Department for the purchase and installation of a tennis backboard at Emerson Park. The minutes of August 9th, 2021, town accountant warrants for November 10th, 2021, the one day special liquor license for Terre Haute Wine LLC on November 22nd, 2021, and a one day special liquor license for the Concord Youth Theater for an event at 53 Church Street on January 8th, 2022.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman.
Hi.
Ms. Bates.
Hi.
Mr. Dane.
Hi.
Ms. Escobedo. And myself, Mr. Johnson, I.
Okay, thank you. And before we go on, another item of business. Would really like to thank Jeremy Romanul, his last select board meeting. Jeremy dedicated to many boards, especially the select board, and he worked all weekend with Matt getting ready for tonight's meeting. And still he's a very, very dedicated employee. We really want to thank him.
Yeah, and we have a token of our appreciation that I could bring by to you at the chat house. First, a little bit of the past, which is a book signed by a Concord author and for Robert A. Gross. That's The Transcendentalists in Their World that is just published. And then something for the future, which is a gift certificate for a restaurant near where Jeremy now lives in Watertown. So hopefully you can remember fondly your time with us and remember Concord both as past and present. And we look, we really wish you well in your public service career moving forward.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. I've talked to a lot of you over the course of the last few weeks on the screen beyond. And as I've said, I'm really appreciative of the opportunity to work here, especially during the pandemic. Such a trying time. And I'm really appreciative to many in Concord. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Okay, and we will now proceed to the nominations.
Sure. Alan Begosian of 1624 Main Street to the Historical Commission to fill an unexpired term set to expire on May 31st, 2022. Sustainability Director Amanda Khan to the Middle School Building Committee for a term to expire at the completion of the project.
Okay, and the last thing is appointments.
So move to nominate Terry Hansen of 77 Hill Street and Sam Sterns of 124 Tarbell Spring Road to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Committee for terms to expire April 30th, 2024. Mary Beth Barker of 51 Birch Drive to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee as the Commission on Disability Representative for a term to expire May 31st, 2022. And Stephen Urza of 39 Cottage Street to the Junction Village Open Space Task Force to fill an unexpired term set to expire April 30th, 2023.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman.
Hi.
Ms. Bates.
Hi.
Mr. Dane.
Hi.
Ms. Escobedo.
Hi.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, I.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are now ready to move to our focus meeting. That will be our only order of business tonight. First, let me thank all the people who are here tonight. We have 62 people right now. And thank you for sending in your templates in advance. As I said, Matt and Jeremy worked all weekend diligently putting together hundreds of items to prepare for tonight's meeting. And the purpose of the meeting is, you know, this report in Vision Concord, this was done in 2018. And now here we are, more than three years later. What have we accomplished? Despite COVID, we've actually accomplished a lot. And what remains to be done and what has changed? So that's the purpose of tonight's meeting. And really, I am so pleased to look at this template and have this meeting. We've accomplished an awful lot despite COVID. We should all be patting ourselves on the back. So let us first turn to the co-chairs of the Invision Concord, Elise Woodward and Gary Clark. They will be reminding us about the big ideas and what that was all about. Okay, Elise, I think you're going first. Okay, and we have some screen sharing, I think, some slides.
Yeah, I could share the slides myself or you could share them. It's up to you.
Why don't you? Yeah, you should share them.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, great.
Seeing them?
Yes, good. So, good evening. I'd like to thank the Select Board for giving focused attention to integrating the work of the boards and committees in the implementation of the long range, comprehensive long range plan. And thank you for inviting Gary and me to join you tonight to briefly mention the highlights of the plan. First, as a general reminder, the plan is inspirational, is sorry, is aspirational. The vision for Concord integrates the town's sustainability principles as a framework for municipal decision making. The plan describes a systems approach for comprehensive planning and emphasizes integration across all sectors of traditional planning elements. And the plan seeks to balance the inevitable growth with the values, culture, and qualities that are unique to Concord. The plan was not constrained by budget and financial analyses and left that critical task of analyzing economics to the departments and committees that will be taking the lead on implementation. And we'll hear more about that tonight. So the vision in practice, the Invision Concord Plan emphasizes collaborative decision making through a broad systems approach, encouraging departments, staff, committees, and boards to identify and consider from the outset the common and competing interests that exist and to propose collaboration on joint resolutions to meet and serve multiple goals. The values specific to Concord were identified as community criteria. They're listed here. The plan intended that these criteria be applied to planning goals and decision making to ensure that the recommendations in the plan and in future implementation actions would be aligned with these community values. Throughout the plan, the sustainability goals and principles that have been adopted by the town, including the intent to set new goals for climate resilience, were embraced. Next slide, please, Matt. So Terry mentioned the big ideas. During the planning process, three big ideas emerged. And these ideas are summarized here. They encompass three high priority sets of goals for Concord and suggest ways in which a collaborative approach to planning and implementation can both align interests and improve outcomes. Importantly, these three big ideas were not intended to be exclusive or all encompassing, but to be illustrative of how the systems process can work to create efficient and mutually beneficial solutions for the goals and how such an approach may benefit all parties. Gary.
Thanks, Elise. Matt, if you can go to the next slide. While the the plan that Invision Concord developed embraced the systems approach and the big ideas, as Elise just laid out, it also recognized that there are traditional municipal functions that, you know, plan elements need to recognize. Those are listed here, you know, sort of the traditional planning elements were where the actions, the goals and actions were directed. However, they were organized in a way that would all lead towards, through a systems approach, achieving and attaining the big ideas. If you go to the next slide, we have a graphic that tries to explain for folks exactly how the actions and the goals that they support are orchestrated collaboratively across municipal departments, boards, committees, all to sort of head us in the same direction of supporting big idea number one, big idea number two, and big idea number three. Not all goals and actions support each big idea, but it turns out that many, many actions may support more than one big idea. So the report kind of recognizes that. Hopefully, this graphic makes clear that a number of the things we're going to be talking about tonight, whether it be the National Resources Commission that I represent, or many of the other boards or committees in town. A lot of what we're working on are supporting similar concepts, similar approaches that all will help Concord move in the same direction. So with that, Matt, why don't you give us a review of where we're at?
Sure. So over the past several weeks, about two dozen groups have supplied over 300 updates to us based upon the implementation actions that are listed in the report. So each of those eight sections that Gary covered before, there are specific goals and actions within each. And so those, then, we asked people, okay, what have you done with these? And are they complete, in progress, or things on hold? And so the feedback that we got is just summarized here. So you can see that in the the top slice there in blue are things that are complete. But that isn't all the stuff that's complete. When you also add to that things that are practices that the town has adopted and that are ongoing as the course of doing business, that's another chunk of 50 items or so. And then there are some that have both had project deliverables that were completed, and then they have further things that are in progress or ongoing. So when you add all those up, you get about a third of the items that we really have taken care of so far in the plan. And seeing that we're really just three years into a 12 year plan, it sounds like we're pretty well on course. And the other thing to note is about half of them also have in progress items. Now, there are a certain number that have either been identified as being on hold, and many of those are due to the pandemic. But or that are blank, that haven't actually had attention yet. But we still have a lot of time going forward, and hopefully events like this will draw attention back to the plan. And as people make their, set their goals for the next fiscal year, they can start to incorporate those into their plans. Now drilling into those big ideas a little bit more, there, as Gary and Elise said, three of them. The first, and each of them is kind of cross functional. They look at combining things that are typically looked at independently and seeing how synergies can be gained from looking at them together. So looking at leveraging the cultural and historical assets of Concord, for example, and getting a business benefit from them as well. And so that's big idea number one. And we've made good progress if you look at the the amount of completion for those items. Regarding the second item, which is improving our housing situation within Concord and also at the same time leveraging and protecting our open space, that one also has significant kinds of results. The third one is about working through our transportation issues and looking at economic vitality, but also considering sustainability. And there, the completion rate is less, but I should note that I think that that's reflecting a little bit the different committees that we had, a few committees that have not yet been able to provide their updates. And so, for example, we have not gotten an update from the Economic Vitality Committee, and that's a key one for this. So anyway, overall, you see some good progress and that some of the ideas, we've made very good progress up until now. Looking at it from another perspective, from the sections of the report, so this is more of the traditional functional areas. You can see, and it's probably not a surprise, that land use is the one that has the greatest progress. And if you think of the leadership of this this plan and the planning as a discipline, land use is kind of in that area. But there's also great progress in the other areas as well. And you could see it. It again, with that one exception of economic vitality, and it's a little bit ironic because I think we actually have focused significantly on economic vitality in the pandemic period, that these all show good progress up until now. So this is the, just the quick summary, but now we can move to just the analysis of the each of the group's updates and see where they have landed on each of these things.
So what we Oh, you're still, okay, go ahead. Go ahead. Sorry.
Well, I mean, I, isn't this how we'll do it, I think?
I, yes, we're going to be, starting with the planning board. Before we do that, I just wanted to. Okay, I have two requests for everyone attending tonight. Please try to keep your presentation as brief as possible so we have time for questions. The board has about half an hour, including questions. Everyone else has something like two minutes. We have so many people to get through. And my second request is, as we all listen to each other, we should all be thinking about what Elise and Gary said about integration and coordination and collaboration. How can my committee work collaboratively with the group that's presenting? And take back our ideas to our own committee and try to figure out how we break down those silos and work collaboratively. Be thinking of that as the others present. So with that, I'd like to start with the planning. And I think Burton Flint might be the presenter, or perhaps Marcia or Elizabeth.
Terry, it's Burton. Thank you. I'm just wondering how, maybe Elizabeth, Matt, how you best want to go through this? Planning board has, I think, 33 items on the spreadsheet. I was thinking what it would, rather than go through each and every item, going off Gary's comment that some of our actions are hitting multiple items, hit the big themes. But Matt, did you have other ideas?
So one idea was to talk about what you've completed and then to talk about any areas where you have immediate plans or you have barriers to making progress and maybe need help, because this is an opportunity for cross functional collaboration.
Okay, great. I think that's a good approach. And I see you've just sorted by complete, right, or by status, it looks like. Thank you. Okay, so what I can first touch on is, is one of those big ideas that was up there, talked about all the different housing choices. And and that's something we hear at the planning board quite a bit, primarily talking about the missing middle, the affordability or lack thereof for the middle class and people who work in town. But also, very significantly, people who are are maybe empty nesters or looking to downsize, would like to stay in Concord, maybe use their home as an asset to be able to stay. And so to that end, we've done a couple of things over the last three years. The first was at the 2020 annual town meeting, we did, created, allowed for accessory dwelling units and and loosened some restrictions on those that would allow people essentially to be able to rent those out, also to be able to move into them and rent out their main house. And so that's that's an action item that's been completed. And so you can now build an accessory dwelling unit throughout town. There were some restrictions on the size. They're intended to be small and accessory. And you can go to a slightly larger size with a special permit, but that's it. That was completed. And we're seeing people take advantage of that and begin to develop some of those. Last year, at the 2021 annual town meeting, we did, we we created the ability to create a two family house by special permit in Residence Zone C. And so that's a model of development that was not allowed under the zoning bylaw. It's been in place since the 19, or well, it's a model of development and has not been allowed for a very long time, since I believe the 1920s. And and we're starting to see some people take advantage of it in residency where there are historically some two family houses remaining. I think there are four that have that have been permitted so far for two family houses. So those two things do allow for the creation of smaller housing forms, allowing, you know, to be able to create two units, two households on on one lot and so forth. In particular, the accessory dwelling units would allow somebody to supplement their income by renting out an accessory dwelling unit or potentially downsizing and living in that unit while staying in Concord. Let's see, the next thing, that that checked many of the boxes. One one box under completed, Matt, that you went by, but it's almost technical in nature, is revisiting the flood, the 100 year flood map zones, and which we do, and we will be doing again at the 2022 annual town meeting. Actually, in this case, actually reducing some areas that are subject to the 100 year flood zone. So that's great. I think I've hit those completely.
Yeah, those are the main, I think.
Yep, okay. Things that are are coming soon. And this goes to also housing choices, sustainability, and some of the village center revitalization that was that threads its way through the the 2030 plan. We've been spending a lot of time in about a two year long process at this point, working on considering possible zoning changes to the Throw Depot Business District, which is the area encompassing the commercial elements of Thero Street, where it intersects with Sudbury Road, as well as the the parcels of land that on which is presently located, the Crosby's Market, CVS, and some other businesses there. We were very fortunate. The planning department was able to obtain a grant to fund outside consultant from the Massachusetts Area Planning Council, I believe it is, MAPC. And they led a sort of a shred process with two public forums where we sought input on what could be changes in the Throw Depot Business District. Some of those changes would be to provide more flexibility and being able to build combined business and residence. Some of the things currently, those those are allowed in the in the Throw Depot area. But they, if you, if it's combined, it needs to be in the same building. We're looking at being able to have that combination be on a lot, lot by lot basis. We've looked at bringing in design guidelines to encourage the businesses and other developments to move out on, to front the street, especially on Sudbury Road, which is currently fronted by a parking lot. And that's been a long discussion. And with a with a great deal of time spent on that by the planning board. And we're continuing to work on that. And I think we'll be working up to it right till we finalize a, an article for consideration in 2022. Another issue that we we look at frequently, or you hear with the relate, with relation to the village centers, is the formula business bylaws, which we currently, we started with in in West Concord. And I think it was in 2021, it was approved at annual town meeting to add a restriction on the number of formula businesses in the the main center in Concord. And we're looking at expanding that to the Throw Depot area as well in 2022. So that would be a limit based on the number of formula businesses that have the same, you know, look and feel, you know, in in multiple locations around the state or around the country. And so we're looking at that as well, sort of not not as part of the the general overall business district rezoning, but but in conjunction with that as well. Another thing that we've been looking at, and Matt, I'm sorry, because I'm not really going point by point here, you've got it.
That's fine. Highlights, yeah.
Yeah, the the next thing is on sustainability principles. This, we, as a planning board, we look at this a lot. And and certainly when we are performing a site plan review or reviewing a planned residential development, or to much less degree, but to the extent we can, subdivision reviews. We tried to thread into those reviews and in any conditions of approval, sustainability principles. We we've recently updated some of the the PRD rules to make clear that sustainability is a factor that's considered. We are kind of hemmed in, especially around requiring things that would fall within the the area that's part of the building code, because we cannot customize the building code for Concord. So oftentimes, people are pushing for things like not allowing new gas hookups or requiring a certain amount of energy efficiency, or, you know, all electrical appliances and the like. And we simply can't do that at this juncture under the state building code. And so we look at alternatives in terms of providing incentives for providing, you know, sustainability characteristics to a development, such as, you know, allowing EVs charging or solar, solar ready building projects, potentially using heat pumps and the like instead of, instead of fossil fuels. That is, I don't believe we have any particular action item for this year's annual town meeting, but it's something we're continuing continually looking at and looking at different approaches that would be allowable under under our authority as a planning board. Matt, or any, or Elizabeth, if you're listening, are there any particular items you'd call out?
I think the only other item I would call out is for the last many years, and Marcia could probably put an exact date as far as the transportation options for the community. As you read up on the screen, we did receive a grant from the state to implement a workforce commuter shuttle throughout town. And then the pandemic hit, and the state did not distribute those funds. But we do think that they will be opening up another grant round. And I think we'll, we were successful the first time. I think we'll definitely be successful again. But also on that transportation side of things is as new projects come in, looking for opportunities for sites and employers to participate in crosstown connect and try and promote that transportation option as well. And then Marcia is working with Beth Williams, the visitor and Economic Vitality Director and the National Park on a visitor shuttle. And we're hoping that we can coordinate those two to really get coverage in the community. So that's not necessarily a planning, specific planning board item, but it is definitely something that the planning division is, you know, threading through a lot of different other elements.
Thanks, Elizabeth. And just to make a couple more general points is, you know, the planning board in particular is lucky to have tremendous staff support that does a lot of the coordination with other other departments and can inform us when other boards and things are working on on things. Couple of things that continually come up where I think there there's great opportunity for more coordination. And and there's been a little bit of this today, this with a new sustainability director in terms of identifying ways that the planning board could implement more sustainability measures and in in the zoning bylaws in our in our project reviews, et cetera. Also around affordable housing, you know, as an example, and we talked about this at last week's Affordable Housing Meeting. When the Throw Depot, we're looking at, how do you, how do you tweak the formulas for when affordable housing, you know, when a developer needs to build affordable housing as part of a development, how do you tweak? affordable housing as part of a development? How do you tweak that? So so that housing is actually getting built. We've we've found that under the current zoning bylaws in the Thro Depot, the projects aren't getting built that include affordable housing. And perhaps one of those reasons is that it's there's too much of a disincentive because of the costs imposed. And so how do you how do you tweak those things? Is there room for creating a payments in lieu of building units? So there's more flexibility and in terms of more of a range of a contribution rather than sort of having the stepwise of 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 having to build a an entire unit or or two units, whatever the case may be. And so that discussion, I think, and coordination between planning and the various affordable housing committees, I think is really will be really important to implement some of these 2030 goals.
And may I add to the discussion on the the transportation aspect? Elizabeth Hughes was did a lot of outreach to the various businesses and Emerson Hospital in preparing that grant for the funding and was successful in getting it. It's unfortunate that we were unable to proceed, but working with Beth Williams and the National Park Service, we've the Town of Concord participated in a study called the BOPI study to look at our our visitors who are coming for historic reasons. And then so we're continuing our conversations. And if we were able to get the workforce grant and we were able to coordinate with the National Park Service, there might be an opportunity to get some vehicles, electric buses, electric transit vehicles that could serve both our visiting community, people coming from Boston by train and being able to travel around the town during the day and meeting our commuter needs, workforce needs in the morning and afternoon. So there's a lot of integration between these two ideas that we are continuing to promote. And I think that addresses economic vitality issues. There were several that talked about talking with working with Emerson Hospital and the other businesses and working on that transportation for workforce. So, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, um, thank you very much, Burton, Elizabeth, and Marcia. And you guys are all set. I think we have a few minutes to take some questions. And please try to keep your questions very, very brief.
I would like to add one thing, Terry. The planning division had over has about 132 of these action items. So I did not have the time to go through each item to say where we are. Many of them are in progress or underway or working toward things slowly and gradually. These past three, this this envisioned Concord plan has been on the shelf or in our in our hands for only three years. And so I think there's been tremendous progress on the on different venues and different tracks. And so I would, I'm sorry that I didn't take the time to do 132 items, but I didn't have time.
That is fine. And yes, there's been a tremendous amount of progress. What we will do at the end of this meeting is we will post this entire matrix on the website so that anybody interested in a particular item or in all 132 items or in all 300 and whatever items for the whole thing can read as much detail as they'd like. So at this time, if someone wants to raise their virtual hand or their physical hand, and I think maybe we should stop screen sharing
Sure.
for a minute. Okay. And please keep your question very brief. We do not have a lot of time here. We want to move on. Hey, let's see. Don't see any questions right now. I'm looking through all the people. We had 76 people. Fantastic turnout. Jeremy, do you see any questions? Anybody or Matt?
Pamela just raised her hand.
Okay, Pamela, if you could be very brief with your question.
Yep. Pamela, 13 Concord Green, Unit 4. I know that we can't require zoning, but can't we do carrot things like encouraging those that have PRD developments that are solar, all electric, battery backup.
Okay.
To have special Bennys and particularly give some kind of benefits in terms of reduced number of parking spaces for covering all parking areas with solar and roofs with solar.
Okay, who would like to address that question? Burton or Marcia?
I I could take a first shot. And the short answer is, yes, we can. And we're continually looking at what types of incentives we can do, given that we are restricted in being able in in putting hard requirements on on folks on developers with respect to many of those things. It's a balancing act, because as you said, you know, as your suggestion, reduce the parking if it's covered with solar. There are, of course, people that feel we don't have enough parking today. And so it's 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 listening to voices from coming from different perspectives. Also, there's a balance in terms of how much of an incentive you provide and panel. I think you've you've heard some of our conversations around potentially adding a sustainability measure to to the floor area ratio formula. And and we, you know, as we've looked at that, there's there's a question as to whether you that becomes de facto, you're actually putting in place a requirement and and whether that would be permissible through Attorney General Review. So we're we're always looking at that. And we and we always appreciate your suggestions around there. And and we will continue to do so.
Thank you. Are there other questions for the planning department and planning board? Hey, I don't see any. And that means we are going to move on to the town departments. Our town manager, Stephen Crane, is going to summarize the town department items.
Well, I think it's so we can get, there's a lot of stuff to get to tonight. So I think I would just briefly say that, you know, not every town department has 132 items. So obviously, you know, the planning department is heavily represented appropriately so. But we do have, you know, it just like many of the items touch on each of the three big goals. Many town departments touch on many of those items. And so I guess what I would say is, you know, when I when I looked at Envision Concord as as I was preparing to come here, it was really one of the best, if not the best developed and written master plans that I had really ever seen. And I think its brilliance was in its simplicity and how it really distilled everything to you know, very simple, big goals, and then laid out a systems based approach. And I think the town departments have done an excellent job. Not only through their own actions and work, but also through the support of the many volunteers who have spent countless hours serving on boards and committees. And so I think when I, in addition to being blown away by his pivot table game, I think I was Matt's summary of the spreadsheet summaries, looking at the percentages of complete and underway. That was really, I mean, I was so impressed by that. I think we we try and accomplish those goals sometimes without even thinking about it, which is one of the reasons why I think we had such a high amount, a high number, relatively considering we're year three or four into a 20 something year plan. I was really blown away by how how much ground has been covered already. And I think that there's the stage has been set for even more accomplishment on that. And so I think what I would say on behalf of the town departments is, you know, the those goals are really very, they're so consistent with the town's character that I I think that they are incorporated either consciously or unconsciously to just about everything we do. And so I I was while I was impressed with the numbers, I in you know, in thinking about it, I'm not really surprised because those are the goals and the in the broader objectives that we apply to our regular work, you know, day in, day out. So I just, I do want to commend the town staff and 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 the the management team, because they do take this stuff very seriously and have really gained a lot of grounds, as I said. So and of course, the volunteer boards and committees. You know, there's a symbiotic relationship there that has really benefited the community and and made lots of progress on the plan. And if people have specific questions about specific departments, I do have some of our department heads here. Again, not everybody is as as represented in Envision Concord, so I can certainly take questions. And if I don't have somebody on from the team here, I can, you know, reach out to them. But I guess I would just, like I said, say thanks to the for the work and open for questions.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. Are there questions for Stephen and the town departments?
So, yeah, so I guess what I'd say to everybody here and everybody watching, there's a lot of information after this, after the spreadsheet gets posted, certainly check it out, check out the work of some of the individual departments. And, you know, reach out to us if you have any questions or comments about about the things that are happening. And it just, it's a lot. And I know I I just couldn't figure out a way to distill it into two minutes.
Right, right. Stuff. Jennifer Schindman, you have a question.
Hi, not not a question so much, it's just a comment.
Please give your address, name and address.
I'm the co-chair of the Economic Vitality Committee, and I live at 712 Monument. So I just wanted to clarify that the Economic Vitality Committee was formed at the very end of 2019. And just as we were sort of starting our infrastructural development COVID hit. So we did quite a bit of excellent work in the last year and a half. But very little of that met up against this particular objective. We made the decision early on to pivot and respond in more of a crisis management mode. So we did submit a brief word document that outlines the incredible achievements that we were able to do hand in hand with many, many other committees and department heads. I just wanted to put that out there. And I believe that word document was also available. But I am happy to answer any questions that may come up in the course of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And we do have a section coming up where Economic Vitality will be part of that section coming up. Does anyone else have questions for the town manager and the town departments? See any? Okay, we're going to proceed now to a number of short sections, and we will pause periodically for questions. So the first section is going to be the Concord Municipal Light Plant Board, followed by the Public Works Commission. And if Diane Proctor is here, we will continue with Community Preservation Committee.
I'm here now, Terry. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Diane. Okay. Who is going to speak for the CMLP Board? We have Wendy here or Dave Wood? Is anyone here from CMLP? Okay, let's continue. We might get back to them later. I know that Jeff Fasser is here for the Public Works Commission.
Yes, good evening, Terry, and good evening, select board. Thank you for inviting us tonight. If I'm speaking on behalf of the Public Works Commission and as well as the public work staff who pull together the information that's in the spreadsheet as well as an attached memo that went with that. I also want to say that during the day I am a planner. I've done many community master plans in my past years. And it's great to see that the town has an up to date master plan and that they're having meetings like this. I think this is really fantastic to make sure everybody's moving in the same direction as we start to tackle some of the goals and objectives in this plan. When the packet came to Public Works, the staff there got together and started to populate the spreadsheet. And what was impressive was that most of the staff, if not all the staff who were involved with updating the spreadsheet, were actually not in the positions, the management positions there and now when the when the master plan was created. So they are they are new to their positions, and they found it very informative to go through the process of populating the spreadsheet. Most people know Public Works as, you know, the Department of T S K are streets, sidewalks, lights, our drainage system, our water system, our sewer system. And in Concord, we also maintain our parks and our compost site, our former landfill, public shade trees. These are things that typically people associate with Public Works. As the staff went through the different elements of the plan, we started to note where we have supported the partners, supported a number of other departments or boards or initiatives or activities within the community to really take a holistic approach to not only dealing with the public infrastructure, but helping lift up our community in many different ways. So as you'll see, as we went through the spreadsheet and answered certain things, you could see a lot of crossover with Public Works assisting with other departments or other activities in town. So obviously, Public Works plays a vital role in a number of things that happen within the community, and we're very proud of that and the work that they do. So in looking at this, Public Works, again, being very integrated into a number of things is 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 certainly eager to work with everybody in a in a coordinated effort to tackle some of the other initiatives that are in this open, this master plan. And so as we move through this, I guess the one point that we met last week, the commission met last week, the one point we wanted to make was that the department is happy to help, and we just want to make sure that it's it's done with a recognition that sometimes this assistance will require additional resources or skill sets. And provided the right tools are provided to us or any other department in town for that that sake. I think everybody's willing to work together to to help move these initiatives and goals forward.
Yeah, I would like to commend the Public Works Department and the Public Works Commission. I think you all are the champions for the number of entries that you submitted for implementation actions. And I I think to just call attention to a couple of the ones that you indicate had been completed, it was the you know, the municipal buildings need assessment that was done in in 2019 as well as the threat assessment around that the Water Division completed. So I just wanted to highlight a couple of those that you had noted had been completed relative to some of the goals.
Yes, thank you, Matt.
Yes, you guys have many, many items. And perhaps we have some questions for the, well, actually, let's go to the Community Preservation Committee, and then we will take questions for you both. Diane Proctor.
Thank you very much, Terry. For some reason, our submission did not stick to the report, but we will work on figuring out why that didn't happen tomorrow. The the bottom line is that the state of Massachusetts, under the Jane, the governorship of Jane Swift, formulated the Concord the Community Preservation Act on September 14, 2006. And in 2000, 2006, the Town of Concord voted to create a Community Preservation Commission. We are governed by certain kind of laws and certain mandates, but what is most important is that we try to balance our contributions to community housing, historic preservation, open space, recreation, and then a very small percentage, 2% are under to administrative costs. Since 2006, the CPA or the CPC has allocated $25,935,233 to the Town of Concord for various projects and undertakings. 18.7, 18,720,790 of those dollars went to town projects, which makes out about 72% of the costs. And $7,214,433 went towards nonprofit projects, which means about 28% of the costs. The CPC tries very hard to balance contributions to each, and I'll repeat them again, community housing, historic preservation, open space and recreation. And if we do not find a project that is able that we are able to fund in one of those areas, we bank that money so that we can use it the following year to the advantage of the town. we bank that money so that we can use it the following year to the advantage of the town. I'm, it is a privilege to be on this committee. It is a privilege to try to bring the best resources we have to support what the town undertakes in each of these areas.
Okay, thank you, Diane. And are there questions for CPC and Public Works?
Terry, I can say that if you go to our website, all of that support is detailed.
Right. Gary Kleiman has a question.
Thanks, lesser question, more of a comment that I wanted to make responding to Jeff's point that, you know, a lot of the current management in Public Works maybe was in a staff position when the plan was developed and were themselves, you know, not necessarily familiar with how the plan was designed and structured and being implemented. And I just wanted to point out for folks that in the back of Envision Concord, there's also a whole set of systems checklists. And for all of the staff who may be on this call, take a look at those, because I think they would be really helpful and useful as any project, whether it's a CPC project, whether it's a Public Works project, natural resources project. As any projects implemented, those checklists will help you put on your systems-based thinking cap and, you know, think about how you can be implementing that project in a way that takes advantage of the structure of the report. So I just wanted to point that out, but thanks.
Thank you.
Terry, we are funded by the state, and we are also funded by the tax, a 1.5% tax that takes place in Concord. With anybody, the first $100,000 of someone's, of the value of one's property is not counted toward that tax. So between state money and a property tax here in Concord, that's how we fund what we do.
Okay, thank you.
Terry, if I could add one more thing.
Yes, Jeff.
And then. Just very quickly, I should have brought this up. I've been on the commission a little over a year now, and I have to say I'm very impressed with both what Public Works does, as well as other departments in town do to go after various state grant programs and funding opportunities, because they support a lot of what's in Envision. So the town, I believe, is really on top of looking for other funding sources to help with the implementation. Because a lot of times what the state is trying to push and fund such as sustainability, complete streets, et cetera, are things that are in the Envision Plan. And let's try to capitalize as much as we can on the state dollars that are available to help us implement part of our master plan.
And Terry, I could also just briefly show just the part of the plan that Gary was referring to a minute ago, which is at this section five of the plan. The idea is that whenever you're going to do a new initiative, you go through and, you know, we have each of these filters. So based on history and character, you know, you really decide how does the project contribute to each of these elements of, and not all of them are relevant, right? But for ones that are relevant, really answer the question as to how is this really supporting our goals? And so it is a planning mechanism really that can be used in any of the town's initiatives going forward.
Thank you, Matt, that's very helpful. I see two more questions, and then we're going to move on. So Brian Rossborough and then Linda Escobedo.
Good evening, thank you, Terry, and thank you, group. My question is really to Jeff Fraser and Public Works. Integrated Water Management Plan for Concord, has it been staffed, budgeted, and is it a priority? And the second question is, an urban forest master plan called for in the Climate Action Plan for Concord, has that been budgeted and staffed, and who will manage it? Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the question. I'm going to turn both of those over to Alan, who's on the call. And I know he's has a keen interest in the Water Resources Management Plan.
As well as, hello, Alan Cathcart, Director, Concord Public Works, thanks for the opportunity. The first question relates to a concept called Integrated Water Resource Management Planning. In essence, it's a, an opportunity that allows a community to look at its various water resources in an integrated way, as it would suggest. But that means specifically drinking water, both on sources, environmental impacts and demand. It means wastewater, which is the collection of water and treatment to before it goes to a wild and scenic river. And stormwater management, which is in essence, you know, any of the precipitation or snow melt that occurs anywhere in Concord, and what's its kind of fate and transport, both on chemistry, you know, quality, as well as volume. And what we're trying to do, and as Brian's alluded to, we're trying to look at them as just like this comprehensive, in a sustainable way. How do they interrelate? And how do we manage them so that we can sort of minimize our environmental impact, make them more sustainable? We're sensitive to changing climate. We're having longer periods, more extreme droughts, a more intense rainfall, precipitation. And Public Works has to deal with, you know, the systems that support those things. So this concept is relatively new in the industry. And Brian, we do have a consultant on board we've hired to help us develop a framework. Once we develop a framework, and in order to do that, there's going to be some outreach and community input and make sure we get all stakeholders around the table so we can sort of understand. I think it's a great education tool for the community. But ultimately, it's a, how do we manage these resources so that we can continue to provide service, allow for economic growth and development, and minimize environmental impacts, you know, all in one? So that's, that initiative has been funded, at least for the first phase. As Jeff mentioned, we continue to look for the state to see if we can get grant support to make it a little bit more robust. But I think you'll hear more about the framework over the next year. So that's positive. When you talk about the tree issues in Concord, Public Works also, we have the Tree Warden, you know, works within Concord Public Works. The Tree Warden deals with challenges of hazard trees and safety issues, storm management, when we have storms come through and how we have to manage, you know, tree damage and cleanup. But at the same time, we were fortunate to get a grant through the state for plantings. We were able to plant over 100 trees throughout Concord as funded through the state. Brian's question on a kind of master plan for the tree management, or, you know, how do we do this in a sustainable way is still a question. You know, we have worked to look at, you know, potential opportunities in Concord as far as farms. It's early in the concept, as we talked, we have a relatively new team. So we're, we're getting to know what we need to know of core responsibility and then expanding. And the tree management end of things is a room or an area for opportunity that I think Concord's interest in protecting and preserving trees is well understood. In fact, our staff worked with, you know, Brian and some of the Friends of Concord Trees on developing a very nice brochure. If Eddie's interested, they can kind of get in touch with me directly or go to our website to educate people as far as native trees, and whether it would be in the right of way or in private property, just to try and educate and encourage appropriate plantings. And so I think people should be aware of that. But we have, there's opportunities, room for growth on the tree end of things. And I hope that answers your question, Brian.
It does, well done, thank you.
Thank you, Alan, thank you very much. And Linda Escobedo.
Thank you, Terry. First, I want to, you know, thank all the departments and committees for their work that's represented here. It's so much work that gets distilled in these individual items. I want to follow up on a comment that Jeff Fraser made when he was complimenting the department, in this case, the Public Works Department, for taking advantage of the grant opportunities and the impact that has on accomplishing these goals. And I guess my question would be for all of the departments that are here this evening in terms of, do, you know, are there bandwidth or staff limitations that are in any way impacting our ability to go after even more grant money?
I can take a shot at that on behalf of departments. I mean, we do apply for a lot of grants, and so I don't want to, I don't think we leave a lot on the table. But yeah, there are, you know, staff limitations. People, you know, board and committee volunteers can research grants online and say, hey, this will be really good. Let's apply for it and then send it over. I mean, the very document we have in front of us talks specifically about assessing the impact of the number of boards and committees on staff. And that is something that is, I guess, in progress. But yeah, there is definitely, you know, I think if we had more, if we had more resources, I think we would provide a higher level of support, but we try to find that right balance with our budget and the size of our workforce with, you know, me and the expectations of the community. And like I said, I think just looking at the results that we have posted, you know, we've done a lot with the group we have.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, that's absolutely right. Okay, we are now going to move on to the Natural Resources Commission, the Concord Land Conservation Trust, and the Agricultural Committee. I'm not sure who's here for the NRC, it might be Nick Pappas, but.
No, sorry, you got me.
Gary, of course.
So as I literally and figuratively put on my NRC hat here. Thank you, Delia. I will give you an update, I'm now on the Natural Resources Commission. And while in two minutes or less, while we're very happy to have completed a number of the actions that were laid out in Envision Concord, we've hired a land manager, have a new 50-foot no-build policy, updated floodplain requirements consistent with state law. The vast majority of what's in the spreadsheet remain ongoing activities. We are always trying to strengthen natural resource protection. I won't go through line by line, but, you know, the whole spreadsheet and all of the things we're doing. But I did want to briefly share, when we had discussions in preparation for tonight, the Natural Resources Commission identified eight priorities where we really felt like our future focus could be placed. And certainly strengthening natural resource protection, as I said, we're always striving to do that. And we feel like NRC should lead that effort. Another area was mapping land characteristics of the town. And this goes towards big idea number two, trying to really identify those areas of town which serve a natural resource or natural protection aspect. And its highest and best purpose of that land may be to remain, say, open space or natural resource protection versus portions of land that may be better placed for development. So identifying the land characteristics so that we know which parcels really are higher protection status, which ones might be appropriate for affordable housing, which ones might be appropriate for town playing fields. There are many goals and objectives that folks want to achieve. And so mapping land characteristics was one. Another priority, and these three are kind of linked, but we saw the Natural Resources Committee leading one of these initiatives. We see Public Works, as Alan just went through, leading other aspects of it, whereas urban forestry may be CAB, which has a specific item in their Climate Action Plan. We see all three of these master plans, if you will, being linked. Integrated Water Resource Management kind of encompasses all of them. But the Envision Concord Plan specifically calls out a net blue task force, talking about water conservation and drought management, stormwater management plan. That obviously is, as Alan referred to already, something that we see as, you know, being much more critically linked to infrastructure and Public Works. And an urban forestry master plan, talking about the role that trees play in stormwater management and drought protection and so forth. So we saw all three of those as being an area of future focus. And then moving on, there are zoning issues, which we feel like probably the planning board is in the right space to lead those efforts, but that NRC could support them. And finally, there is discussion in Envision Concord about coordinated branding opportunities, which we think, you know, the Economic Vitality Groups and, you know, maybe the Visitor Center staff would probably be in the right place to lead developing coordinated branding and marketing opportunities, but that the NRC could certainly support in developing a package around our wild and scenic rivers and bringing people to Concord to experience our wild and scenic rivers and our natural resources. So I will leave it there.
Great summary, thank you very much, Gary. And do we have someone here tonight for the Concord Land Conservation Trust? What about the Agricultural Committee? There are quite a few people here, so don't be shy. If I call on you and I don't see you, there's many, many screens of people, so. Okay, I don't think we have anybody from either of them. So let's take some questions. Matt?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask about stormwater management, because when I was on the planning board and also just looking when I was on the ZBA, it seems like commercial projects and public infrastructure, typically stormwater management is taken care of very well. It's part of the scope of the project. But residential stormwater, there's just currently no regulation. And if you look holistically, you know, and it was interesting that NRC is bringing this up, but it does seem like there's Public Works, NRC, and the planning board potentially that could work together on this. Do you see residential stormwater as a big component, or is it maybe a detail? I'm just trying to see, where do you, what do you attack first, or how do we do this crosswalk?
Alan, want to go first, and then I can add just a thought?
Sure, let me, let me start with just kind of general education. Stormwater grew in interest and popularity primarily through EPA and regulatory framework, the MS4, you know, where they put requirements on communities to better manage the stormwater systems and infrastructure within their control, you know, primarily in the the right-of-way areas, public lands, inclusive of drainage whales, pulverts, that sort of thing. So the Public Works Department did adopt regulations on stormwater, you know, that was consistent. I don't know, I can't remember the year they were adopted. I wasn't intimately involved with the development of them. But they do provide some pretty good standards and guidance that are used by developers and the community to look at the infrastructure with, under various stormwater design basis. When you get to residential development, I do know, I think we had, it's anything under one acre is not regulated through this, the stormwater regulations in town. I don't know, Elizabeth, you know, Hughes might be able to provide some insight. I think she may have been around and had some of the discussions early on and probably shed a little bit more light. As far as the significance goes, Matt, it all matters. I think when we look at a water balance for the community, whatever we can do through, you know, regulatory and educational process is going to help everybody. And I think we're just looking at, I always say stormwater has been the utility orphan for many years. And we're starting to recognize and understand that there's infrastructure, and we like to talk about green infrastructure, but also hard infrastructure that really needs to be identified, addressed, upsized, replaced, that sort of thing. So I think part of our integrated planning effort is going to help us focus a little bit more attention on what are the needs and how do we address them long term? You know, I think that'll help. But Elizabeth, maybe you can answer the question or talk a little bit about the residential scale.
So Alan's correct, from a residential scale, you're talking about, under the MS4 permit, it's land disturbance over an acre. And that's, that's not just the size of a lot, that's just the disturbance. So you might have a residential lot that's over an acre, but the actual disturbance for the construction. So most single-family dwellings do not hit that threshold. So most single-family dwellings do not hit that threshold. And current, yeah, well, there's a couple of side currently being built, but. So from a, a planning board, as Matt said, the planning board always, when a project comes through their jurisdiction, looks to the stormwater. The zoning board of appeals also through their jurisdiction for special permits for single-family dwelling have also been requiring stormwater. I'm going to say mitigation or recharge. Overall, there are many communities that have stormwater, you know, townwide stormwater general bylaws. They're not, they're not a zoning bylaw, but they're townwide general bylaws. They, they usually are developed through Public Works in coordination with all the other departments. But this is, as the town manager said, the question that Linda Escobedo asked. This is something that would elevate total review and staff to, you know, another much higher level if you're, if you're thinking about every single, single-family dwelling. It is, it's, there is an expertise to stormwater. It's not something that the planning division has or the building inspection division has. Or engineering has the expertise, but it's definitely not something that could be taken on by current staff.
Yeah, and to be clear, I was thinking of new construction, you know.
Well, even even new construction with, you know, as far as like the number of teardowns that happen. But it is being captured through special permits through the zoning board of appeals now as well.
And and so recognizing some of those challenges for individual regulatory, that's partly why we're thinking in terms of more of a town-wide urban forestry master plan, recognizing the role that trees and urban forests and canopy plays in resilience planning for, you know, increased precipitation events in the future, and also recognizing that the vast majority of trees in Concord are on private land, not necessarily public ways that Public Works will have, you know, regulatory control over. So we see them all being linked and, you know, working together towards integrated water resource management planning, stormwater planning and urban canopy or urban forestry master planning all play a role.
Thanks to all of you for answering that. And at this point, we will move on now to the school department and the school committee. We have here Court Booth. Thank you for joining us, Court.
Thank you very much, Terry. Thanks to the select board. Thanks to everybody who's brought this together. Notwithstanding the large role sometimes that the schools play in town, we only have, as I see it, about eight items, seven or eight items that were submitted here. And so we're spread pretty thin tonight as a school committee. We've got a number of meetings, so I've been deputized to represent us. I will also necessarily mention the new middle school project, but I have not been formally deputized with that role. So just, I want people to know that. But it certainly is part and parcel of school planning. First one on our list that we submitted is relative to transportation. And although we bemoan the fact that the buses are not more fully used, this was something that we actually put on hold during the pandemic and encouraged parents to provide private transportation. So really the opposite of what we had intended.
Excuse me a minute, Court. Can we put in the screen sharing for this?
Certainly. Yeah, I think I.
Matt or Jeremy probably has it, or unless I'm mistaken. There we go. Thank you.
Okay, all right. I haven't seen it in this form yet. Forgive me.
And and I'm not seeing your transportation item, by the way. So that's one concern. Yes.
So I received another document from the schools. So I'll just talk my way through this. Thank you, Matt. So number one, you know that the PBD is likely to be surplus to the town. And to my knowledge, no formal planning has started in that, in that regard. Number two, the school and town use for those schools, we are now reopening the schools for community use. The TV station at the high school, for example. And very recently, the, the facilities fees and policies have been moved from periodic administrative review into school committee policy work. So that that is a more formalized process that's underway right now. The third one here, assess public facilities and public safety capacity. This is something that we had to redo because of the pandemic. And as you know, we have tents, including some heated tents. We're trying to hang on to them as long as we can to give us a lot of versatility with student learning and the necessary teaching. And our new facility, should it be adopted by the town, actually calls for formal outdoor classrooms as well for future years. The fourth item here, continue coordination with school committee on facility planning regarding the middle school. That's a big subject in and of itself. And I mentioned a few things about that. One, that the school is going to be net zero ready in the plans, and we do have the anticipation of storage capacity for the solar generation that we believe is going to ultimately take place thanks to the superb coordination that the town manager and the light plant are bringing forward toward that committee. The next one, the collaboration between town departments, commissions, boards, and so on regarding roadway improvements. I think notably here, this is the regional school district where we are very attentive to the fact that the high school does require additional attention in terms of sidewalks and lighting and the roadway. We knew this actually during that project that this was going to be a item for future consideration. It's not, not off our radar. And let me see. Thank you, Matt. So we referenced the energy storage, the next one, the low-carbon considerations. And this one, we will readily confess that we did regrettably support the purchase of two diesel buses recently, simply because they were A, absolutely necessary to get kids to school, and B, not within our budget to electrify. But that, I think, is also an item that's going to enter the policy arena so that we can avoid that, that kind of, kind of forced choice in the future, so that we can move more quickly toward fuller electrification. And lastly, proactively strengthen fiscal coordination. We believe that through the FinCom notably, but certainly other departments as well, that this does seem to be happening in a frequent and very healthy way, and we look forward to more of the same. That's it, Terry. Thank you. And I'll be happy to take questions whenever you want to open that up.
Thank you, Court. Questions? Pamela Drit. Pamela, you're on mute.
13 Concord Green, why did we buy diesel buses when we could have rented them? We shouldn't be buying any more fossil fuel infrastructure, particularly in transportation.
Yeah, now this does go back a year. And I think the school committee would be of the same mind. We have something over 30 buses, and we watch their life cycle very carefully. And we did have to replace two that we couldn't use either town funds or the Volkswagen grant for. It's something, as I said, I hope we don't have to repeat. I don't expect we will.
How could we afford to do that, though? Those are expensive.
Well, the, the estimation of the Transportation Department, and we did support their assessment, was that we had to recycle a certain number of buses, and we could purchase more, recently, two electric buses. And we needed to replace fully four. But again, that was a year ago. I don't anticipate that situation repeating itself.
That's a waste of money. I'm very disappointed. We can't spend money on fossil fuel infrastructure.
Okay, thank, thank you, Pamela. Any other questions for Court? Okay. And this is a good segue into our next section anyway, which is the sustainability section. I did see Amanda Cohn here, and I'm not sure if anyone else is here from either CAB or SESEC. So please speak up if you are here. Amanda, are you going to be speaking about this? Or someone from Jake? Okay, hi, Jake.
Hi, Terry. I was just about to jump in. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So thank you so much for the opportunity. I know we are short on time, and so I will try and keep this relatively quick. Really, just for for those who aren't familiar with CAB, we are established to help support the town with achieving its carbon emissions reductions goals and along with the establishment of the Sustainability Department. And we have been, in in our early days, really spent a lot of our time, the the majority of our time, really on building out the Climate Action and Resilience Plan. So a lot of what we are, what sort of referenced in our responses to Envision is really pointing to the work that's been done. And and really, I view the Climate Action Resilience Plan as kind of like a an extra double click, if you will, into sustainability specific to climate for, for the town. So really, it doesn't cover, you know, the, the Envision Plan doesn't cover every single element of sustainability. And neither does the Climate Action or Resilience Plan, but we really try and delve further into, you know, the and and created really the recommendations and the roadmap for the town to help deliver on the carbon goals that the town has. So I'm not sure if we have up the the elements that we submitted, but I think I'll just say that, you know, a number of these, most of ours are in progress. And areas that we put as complete were really elements that were not, I'd say, within our immediate prioritization. So for example, you know, elements around electric vehicle charging stations, bike racks, and public transportation. We, you know, this was addressed in the, you know, in the Climate Action Resilience Plan, and we have some specific recommendations about a transportation function. And so while we've listed as complete, there's certainly work that the town has to do on that element to really bring it to life, and CAB will continue to be involved from, with our role in terms of ensuring and supporting work against the Climate Action Plan and measuring progress against that, and also really focusing in on the mitigation efforts, policies and programs that we need to implement to support carbon reductions across town, both in the built environment as well as transportation. So we really view the, the Climate Action Resilience Plan as our roadmap. And now we're on the phase of really trying to identify those key priorities and policies that as a committee, we need to support going forward and work cross-functionally with all of the other departments, committees, and staff. And obviously closely with the Sustainability Department to identify policies and programs that make sense for the town to to implement and supplement the progress that's already been made and to really ensure that we're executing against the plan. So for those who haven't taken a look at the Climate Action Resilience Plan, really encourage you to or if it's been a while since you've taken a look, really encourage you to take another look. And also, I think this exercise was helpful for CAB to to really reconnect with the Envision Plan. I know Envision informed this, this plan as well in its creation, and Gary and others, many others across town who worked on Envision and and were very familiar with it, also contributed to the Climate Action Resilience Plan. So I think that's a great outcome and kind of continuation of Envision. So I'll leave it at that. I know, I think I'm probably over my two minutes, and welcome any questions that that folks have.
Thank you, Jake. And is anybody here from SESEC? Or Amanda, if you would like to add anything?
Do you see at least one member of SESEC? So I'm happy to not use the two minutes. I, but I want to start by saying, thanks for having me, and thank you all for the warm welcome. Been with the town less than a month, but I can certainly say that progress has been made on Sustainable Concord or the Climate Action and Resilience Plan, which if you, as Jake mentioned, if you haven't looked at it in a while, I would encourage you to go to sustainableconcord.org. That's the fastest way to get to the plan. And that website has a little bit of an interactive component, which can be a nice way of presenting the information if you're working with young people, or if you're looking for data or looking how you can get involved. There are actions that individuals can take that are listed on that website as well. I'm so happy to answer any questions about any of the, the progress that has been made, but really do applaud both CAB and and SESEC for the work that they've done.
Thank you. Do we have some questions? Lois Suarez.
Lois Suarez, 34 River Street, Department 10B. On the Climate Action Advisory Board, I find when they, they put complete and they've actually needed transfer or some sort of co-op with another group, I find that very misleading. And it seems like I've had this conversation before that there should be some sort of interim definition that you're in the process of doing something, saying the bike racks are complete and all of that. It's just absolutely very, very misleading to most of us. Thank you.
Jake, do you want to respond to that?
Definitely. And thank you, Lois, for that, for that comment. And I, I would say I agree that complete is probably not the best description. I think that the challenge with this cross-functional plan, and and that's just the reality of, 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 of this plan and being systems thinking approach, is that there are multiple groups that have some level of involvement in a number of these actions. And so I am happy to, you know, suggest that we amend it to, to another status. But I think I was trying to choose, we were trying to choose the best status out of the options that we had. And I agree that it's a good point to say that that, that action itself is not complete because there are other groups that are, you know, continuing to work on it.
Is that, is that just, you just have so many choices? Is that you just have limited choices in your?
The choices of status were complete, in progress, or on hold.
Okay, I got it. So you could put like cross or somehow integrator. You, you need to have something that says you're, you're working on it with somebody else, I think would be very helpful. Thanks.
Thanks.
Right. Also have added sorted in between in progress and might work in some things. The
Yeah.
Very much.
And also I can just say that in some cases, we had multiple groups that had other updates. And in fact, some of them were, you know, at one status and some were at the other, basically indicating that, hey, somebody handed off to someone else. And yeah, it wasn't fully done yet. I was going to try to pull that up, but that's all right. It's hard to find in 300 rows.
Terry.
We're not hearing you, Terry.
Yeah. Doesn't seem like Christine Reynolds.
Yes, yes. Hi. So Finance Committee had four items. I'm just going to sort of summarize them. They're they're very related. They had to do with financial projections and collaboration with some of the key departments and committees across town. And I think we made significant progress. So in terms of financial projections, we were able to leverage the work of the Long Term Capital Planning Committee Task Force. And their recommendations, so this year, the town will see we have a new process that integrates school and town capital plan and the FinCom took a look at that and had some recommendations with respect to how do we fund and tax or provide taxes that's in support of those capital projects. So that's we've made very good progress on that. That's a very important item. So we're very pleased with that. And in conjunction with this year's planning process for the budgets for FY23, both the town and the schools, working with FinCom, prepared five-year financial projections on spending, again, strengthening our ability to sort of understand the tax impact of certain decisions in the town. So those two elements, as well as our annual sustainable growth rate, which is a a tax growth rate that we we publish, those three things have really helped us tighten and strengthen our ability to do our work around recommending to to town meeting on questions and warrant articles related to spending. So we feel like we've made good progress over the last couple of years.
Terry, you there?
I was lost for a minute.
So I think we had some statement from Economic Vitality, but we could follow up if there's more.
So
I'm I'm happy to do that if you'd like.
Okay.
Hi. Um, I'll I'll just give a very short summary. As I mentioned earlier, Economic Vitality was actually formed at the tail end of 2019. And we haven't had an official staff liaison until very, very recently. We're thrilled to pieces to have Beth Williams named in that role. She's been a phenomenal force here in Concord and especially during the COVID pandemic, just really an incredible, incredible asset. So really, really thrilled to have her as our our staff liaison moving forward. Just a quick little summary, as I mentioned before, the goal of Economic Vitality, of course, is much more long-term envision focused, but when COVID hit, as a committee, we chose to pivot and respond in a sort of crisis communication mode to do everything possible to help the town with incredible support from the the town manager, from the staff. Oh, Jeremy, you don't have to share my Word document. That's okay. I don't want to kill death by bullet point, but I'll just give a quick, quick overview. You know, our immediate response, of course, in the time when we really didn't understand what COVID was or what it meant, was really focused around optimizing safety. We did an awful lot under the stewardship of Stephen and his team to get PPE into the hands of shopkeepers. The immediate next response was to help stem the fiscal hemorrhaging that was happening with all the shops and restaurants who had to shutter for public health reasons. And so, you know, an incredible effort went there to support efforts to identify grants, loan opportunities, the small business loans, the payroll protection program, et cetera. A lot of that happened to streamline applications to help people find resources. But then on a very basic level, there were some things, just trying to connect the town population together with the shops and restaurants. An incredible effort happened around public awareness of how important our commercial centers are to the town and to our culture. If we wanted all these charming and wonderful shops and restaurants and businesses to survive, we all need to rally around them and support them. And so you saw things like investing in Concord signs around town. We, there was a pop-up volunteer group called Concord Together. Economic Vitality worked hand in hand with Concord Together and the town and the Concord Carlyle Community Chest to really do a 360 response to COVID. Everything from grants to help the local businesses to the summer solstice and fall love of Concord passport programs to encourage local shopping, pop-up movie theaters, drive-in theaters for families that were stuck at home without many options to to just have a fun evening out. Waiting fees to hang banners for those programs, suspending parking meters for a while and encourage local shopping. There's a very long list of incredible efforts that happened. What was interesting to me as well, as a relatively new resident here, I've lived in Concord for seven years and as a totally new committee, was this was just a beautiful, beautiful example of what happens when we have this really incredibly collaborative effort. And it went across all kinds of different committees. I mean, the Historic District Committee was so helpful with helping to temporarily suspend signage requirements to help. We had such a great response to the outdoor dining that we were able to successfully collaborate with other committees and put forward a resolution at town meetings. So now we can continue to enjoy outdoor dining in a hopefully post-pandemic world. So lots of, as I said, a sort of crisis response. And now we're finally getting back to our core mission and 2022. You'll start to see a lot more of these sort of infrastructure things coming into place. The good news is we've learned how to collaborate really well across different committees and across staff resources and even with town volunteers. And so we put that great network to use in 2022 to encourage collaboration around economic vitality, to to create a new business advocacy program. As you've noticed, I'm have some empty shops in a couple of our town centers. We want to make sure that the right types of businesses are coming in to keep that cultural sense of self, the charm that we all appreciate. And so we'll be doing very concerted effort to welcome and help those new businesses shepherd the sort of initial steps to get started. And then, of course, we'll be working on milestones towards the WICER program. So I'm happy to answer questions. That's
Thank you. Thank you very much, Jennifer. And are there questions for Jennifer or?
Actually, Terry, I was just going to add something to what Jennifer said, because I think, you know, she's right on all that, all the tremendous accomplishments, but I do want to connect it back to the Envision Concord and talk about and just mention that it truly was a systems-based approach to to economic vitality during the pandemic. And I think the thing that I I'm most proud of is the work that the business community did to get organized, to start working together and form partnerships and new ways of thinking are things that are going to extend past the pandemic and really set the table to achieve the goals in a much more, I guess, streamlined way than I think was probably available to us, you know, back in 2017. I think we've learned a lot and it'll help achieve those goals and and, you know, pursue new ones.
Definitely, definitely. Okay. Other questions for Susan?
Thank you, Terry. I just actually wanted to add on to what Jennifer and Stephen said. I have the I have the privilege of being the Select Board Liaison for Economic Vitality. And the composition of the group includes business owners, property owners, historic site managers. And when the plan was written, the Envision Concord, there was no tourism director. Beth came on for that. And one of the other recommendations is a Economic Vitality department in the town, and that's been accomplished. But I think what was what I saw developing over time was just the ability of these different stakeholders to understand each other's points of view, what it's like to be a renter versus a landlord that's not getting any grant. And to really collaborate. And Jennifer is right, the the efforts that were done and so many different fronts during the pandemic were quite inspiring. So my thanks go to the committee as well as to Stephen and Beth for all they've accomplished and looking forward to see what happens in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Matt?
I just wanted to circle back to the comments I made at the beginning of this session when I was reviewing the summaries for the big ideas. And just to say how ironic it was that, you know, that little bar on the bar chart was the lowest for this, the big idea that combined the economic and and, you know, tourism and other resources that actually it's the most inspiring and the most progress and most in spirit of these big ideas of being collaborative and cross-functional, you know, of all of them. And I think we've done a tremendous amount in the town and and I just wanted to to note that. And I appreciate the work that people have done.
Definitely, definitely. A great accomplishment by everyone. Definitely. Okay. Is anyone here for the Business Development Partnership? Don't think so. Okay, we are going to move on now to the housing section. We have Concord Housing Authority, Affordable Housing Trust Committee, Concord Housing Development Corporation and Regional Housing Services Office. I do see Charles Phillips and Liz Rush here. There might be some others. Who would like to speak first on this? Liz, I guess you're up first.
I guess I'm up first. Right. So I know that I don't think anyone here from the CHDC is here. So I can assist their response. But I think that they they are, as as you might know, they're they're positioned to implement the policies and the and the projects that come before the town and to assist the town in the creating affordable housing. So I think that a lot of the planning board initiatives in terms of zoning are are would would kind of trigger the projects coming forward. So there are no real specific items in the Envision Concord that that directly tied to their activities. But they are there to to assist as called upon. And similarly, I'll just say for the Regional Housing Services Office, again, we're really just here to support the town initiatives versus taking on and leaving any policy-based items such as represented in the plan. So as things go forward, we're we're always here to to assist and provide administrative support and technical support. We have many projects that we work on. They're they're just not represented through the Envision Concord initiatives.
Thank you. And Charles, would you like to say a few words?
Charles Phillips, Bear Haven Road. A member of the Housing Authority for a little less than a year. We did discuss briefly in last meeting what the mission conquered. And we're having some trouble understanding really our place in it, we being a state agency whose principal business is managing many units of housing, rent managing and renting, housing developments and so it it we basically aren't really, we didn't really prepare for for
That's fine. No problem.
It's about it, yeah.
Stephanie Choback. Stephanie, we can't hear you. And you may need to adjust one of your settings or log in and log off. Again, I don't know. Let's go on while you raise your hand when after when you're ready to speak. Is there anybody else from one of the housing groups that would like to speak? Or does anyone have questions for the housing groups? Chris Reynolds.
Thanks, Terry. I have just one question. I'm not sure. Maybe it would be to you, Liz. When I looked at the Envision Concord, the the number one action was developing quantitative targets for creating housing of all types. This goes to the goal of having diverse housing beyond the state housing inventories. This is beyond, I assume, the annual update. So I was curious if there's been progress on that or there's a plan to make progress on that, having a broad inventory of of diverse housing.
So I think there's two parts of that goal, as I understand. One is to to have the inventory of what's actually on the ground now, and we have that inventory. But I read the goal as to create a goal of how much housing should there be? And that would be the part that I don't I don't have and would would be supporting. And maybe it's the Affordable Housing Trust, maybe it's a different group. I don't know, but I know that the CHDC or or the RHSO, because I can speak to both of those, are not taking the lead on that particular setting that goal of how much housing there should be.
Okay, I think that's an important one. So I'm interested to see if anyone is taking that one on. Thank you.
Elizabeth. Pat.
Marshall may want to speak to this, but Liz, I don't know if you want to bring up the town is currently issuing a contract for the update to our housing production plan. And through that, it discusses the the current stock and ways to move forward in providing that diverse housing. So I don't know if Marshall wants to jump in on that one.
Thank you, Elizabeth. I would. We do have a consultant on board to get started. Unfortunately, the 2020 census data is not going to be available until closer to the end of 2022. And so it's a question of do we start something based that that we're going to be taking information from 2010 and then trying to make projections and calculations based on what was in 2010 without having up-to-date information? Or do we delay and and try to grapple with all of this? But the whole housing production plan does a lot of outreach. There's survey, there's a needs assessment, there's an understanding of what our current population is and what the projections might be for the next 10 years. So it it's really, we're at a challenging situation. We have a meeting set up this Thursday to talk about what the pros and cons are for going forward versus waiting and delaying. And then we'll be taking that to the Select Board relatively soon to have a further conversation as to what is needed for the community.
Thank you. And let's try Stephanie again now.
Hi, Terry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm sorry about that, everybody. I was working off my laptop. It's a work a work issued laptop, so I don't quite know the ins and outs of it. So I flipped over to my iPad, so I'm sorry. I am the Vice Chair of the Concord Housing Authority, and I work with Charles and others. As Charles mentioned, he's new, I'm new. We've got a whole host of As Charles mentioned, he's new, I'm new. We've got a whole host of folks, including our executive director, who are new this year. And let me just first start by saying that reading the envisioned Concord report, all 270-plus pages of it, you know, in terms of reading some of the detail and scanning other pieces, was actually good, you know, must-read, required homework for somebody who's new, not only to the town, but to government leadership. I just wanted to mention that we did submit, the Concord Housing Authority did submit a status report to Jeremy for two different actions that were a part of the overall plan. The first was actually participating in and supporting the development of the housing production plan that was just mentioned. So we will make sure that the data is updated for the work we do. So that would be category 4.2. And then the other area where the Concord Housing Authority was explicitly noted in the work plan was 4.3, which is land use. And that one specifically relates to infill properties. And the use of infill land to actually build dwelling units. And we, at this point in time, and you guys may already know about this, are, you know, were approved and had land donated to us for the Commonwealth Avenue property. And we've been working and doing all of the required steps needed to get approval to move forward with the, you know, architectural drawings and the zoning and all those sorts of important steps. And also been looking for dollars to the tune of about $700,000 to actually, you know, do and complete the project. And we've really gotten stuck. Those dollars, as you can, oh, Jeremy, are you gonna share?
If you'd like me to, I can take this down if you want.
No, wonderful, wonderful. I appreciate that. Thank you. So what I was gonna say, you can read it, I think it might be in the fine print somewhere. Yes, it is, under Actions Taken Today. I was just talking about Commonwealth Avenue property. You'll see here that the estimated project cost is about $707,000. And we so far have raised about 66% of that. And, you know, frankly, we are stuck there and really looking at this point. And frankly, have discussed this with a handful of other committees and boards around what might be our next steps. Because we're, you know, not able necessarily to raise the additional remaining funds. So we are working on that. And, you know, going forward, I'm sure there are other places within the envisioned work plan that we will participate in, in a, in a more support role. And we're not necessarily, you know, as I said, explicitly noted. And we will, you know, certainly participate as it relates to affordable housing and the work we do.
Thank you, Stephanie. Do we have any questions? I think Matt, you have a question?
Well, I was just gonna continue the response to Christine's question, which, you know, when it talks about creating workforce housing, the housing production plan will, you know, speak to that in part. But I think that the planning board has also been working to try to change some of our zoning bylaws to enable the construction of less expensive, you know, smaller scale units. And so I, I do believe that that process will continue with the mixed-use zoning. And so, because the way forward here is to try to create market rate units where possible, but then to provide zoning that allows the right kinds of market rate units to be constructed. Because there's just no way we can subsidize every unit. And, and when you look at the gap, just as Stephanie had mentioned, you know, the, the cost of construction here to create an affordable unit is just really, you know, terrifying in times. So, you know, we do need to find a way to meet the workforce housing needs. And at the same time, do meet our obligations to create statutory affordable housing as well.
Thank you. We have time for one more question from Frank Feely.
Yeah, my question is, what's the mechanism? Land is scarce, money is scarce. We have a capital planning group that is trying to prioritize how we spend our available tax investment. What's the mechanism in the town for figuring out how to use land that the town either owns or may control in the future to try and set some priorities for both housing and for other uses? Do we have any mechanism for that? Thank you.
Who would like to take that question? Stephen?
Yeah, I can do that. Yeah, I mean, generally, use of town land is, is, in terms of a mechanism, it's, it's under the town manager's authorities. But I think, you know, our first, our first priority is obviously making sure that we can meet current and future municipal needs and provide services. So, you know, and a lot of, I'll be honest with you, a lot of town land is purchased under some kind, under some type of restriction, whether it's preservation or conservation or agriculture or something like that. So there's not, I don't think there's a tremendous amount of free develop or available, developable town land. But certainly, when we have opportunities, I know, and Liz knows this as well, if there was an opportunity to do a housing projects, an affordable housing project that we thought we could partner with somebody like a developer like CHDC or another nonprofit developer, we would certainly pursue that. But mostly those things are, right as we sit here now, they're opportunistic. But this is where the housing production plan that Marshall referenced, I think, will help give us a pathway forward to look through all parcels, whether they're town-owned or other available parcels through a different lens.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna remind everybody to be very brief. All right, Henry, do you have?
I just want to emphasize one thing, and that is, although compliance with 40B needs to be an element in the housing production plan, it should not be even the dominant feature. We should have a policy which determines how we want our community to be composed socially and economically. And we should plan based on what kind of a town we want to have and should not be driven by 40B alone. That's, that's, and of course, that what, what Matt mentions is that if the production of housing, which is designed to be affordable, is not affordable as the Commonwealth project showed, even when we have free land, we have to really think about other ways of going about creating housing that people can afford to live in.
Thank you, Henry. Excellent point about 40B. I agree with that. Okay, and now we'd like to move on to the section on historical and library and cultural resources. We have Historical Commission, I think Melissa Saltfield, Concord Public Library Corporation, I'm not sure if anyone's here. I thought I saw Lindsay Howard for the Concord Library Committee. And then the Concord Center Cultural District Committee, the West Concord Junction Cultural District Committee, and the Concord Cultural Council. So let's start with Melissa Saltfield. Keep your comments due two minutes if possible. Thank you, Melissa.
Oh, I'll be brief. I, because some, everyone has got this document. And I would just like to highlight the things that we did accomplish. I think we got a little slow start. The pandemic was in the way, plus we had a couple leadership changes. But number one, we were able to amend the demolition delay bylaw. Part of our job as Historical Commission is to help preserve the historic character and, and resources of the town. That's one of the tools that we have. That's really the only tool that we have. And we will continue to amend it as the years go forward, looking to opportunities to strengthen the bylaw. Pleased to say that we revived the oral history program. We hope to present the preservation awards this next spring, something that's been delayed the last couple of years. This is a, it's, it's a good public relations tool. It helps to announce to the community the importance of preservation. We had a big hoo-ha plan a couple of years ago to invite an outside speaker, so we hope to do that again. And probably the most important thing about coordination, integration, and collaboration to promote care and concern for historic resources is the revival of the Historic Issues Coffee, which is, we've met once, we're gonna meet again on Thursday, and I hope to do this every single month. Where an agenda is posted that reviews what we are planning, what we are currently doing, and what we hope to do to improve things. So including in that is something that is an ongoing, is investigating to propose a scenic, scenic road bylaw for the next town meeting. This is something that combines concern for trees, which has been much discussed tonight, and stone walls, historic vistas, and the land. I just want to give a little shout out to the terrific staff that supports us because the changes in the demolition bylaw added a lot more to the plate of Heather Gill, who is our staff support employee. And so we are, have to be mindful of when we do change the bylaw, what it does to our staff. The, I think that's basically it. You know, I think it's, I'm hoping that a lot comes of these historic coffees because they are an opportunity for everyone in the community to come together. And then I, my plan, I hope, is that it'll generate activity from those meetings.
Great. Thank you very much. I see Lindsay Howard from the Library Committee.
Thanks, Terry. I will be very brief this evening. We have one item that we feel really embraces the collaborative nature of, of Envision Concord. And we are going to work to plan programs that coincide with town events, such as Ag Day, the holiday tree lighting, and a variety of events such as those. We're hoping that we can work with the town to develop and promote a more comprehensive townwide calendar so that everybody has, everybody knows where to go to see all of these things and can plan accordingly. We're going to emphasize mixed-age programming to bring a variety of library patrons together and certain activities and events, promote the new social spaces and the newly expanded and renovated library, and collaborate with local businesses to provide food and other, other things at events, particularly such as the annual book sale and the summer concert series at the library. And that's all.
Thank you. And is anyone here with the Concord Public Library Corporation? What about for the Cultural District Commissions? Either of them or the Cultural Council? Okay, I don't see anybody. Are there questions for Melissa and Lindsay? Okay, I don't see any. Let's move on then to the Council on Aging. I think I saw Carol Anne Hannan here and Ginger Quarles.
I can start. Two, we had three goals. Two were in progress, making good progress. The, the third one had to do with assessing the capacity of meeting the social service needs of our, our citizens. And that's basically on hold because we want to try to do a, a formal survey, which COVID got in the way of. However, we'd just like to add that COVID gave the social service folks in town quite a workout in terms of meeting the social service needs of residents during a very trying time. And I think has given us some additional ideas of how we can be helpful, even when we're operating, operating under crisis mode. So kudos to everybody who stepped to the plate during a challenging time for all residents that needed that kind of social service support.
Okay, thank you. And Carol Anne, do you want to add anything?
No, I didn't have anything to add except that Ginger does a great job leading the Council on Aging. She's been exemplary. And I'm very pleased to be on the board for the Council on Aging.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I don't think that Hugh Carville is representing tonight, but David Carr is here from the Tax Fairness Committee. David?
Yeah, had to get my microphone there. Okay, so the Tax Fairness Committee, it's really focused on, on making the homeowner's tax burden better represent the ability to pay. So we have, as I said, the senior means test and the tax exemption actually reduced a lot of people's, some people's tax bills by up to half where it was really needed. It's, we're still working on this. This, this has some hurdles to get, if we're having this in 2030, we've got some hurdles to go on this. I, we have one item, we have one item that we were listed under on this thing. It's, it's quite different from that. It has to do with zoning, business zoning laws, which I think is a very interesting and important topic. But the committee met on this multiple times, felt unprepared to address this. So we have not taken action on it. And I don't think the committee plans to. There was also, I think, the Amherst Initiative was mentioned elsewhere on the, on the spreadsheet, although we're not the responsible committee. That I'm gonna be asking the, the committee members to look at to see if that has any, any bearing on the homeowner's tax burden. I'm not sure that it does, but we will, we will look at it.
Okay, thank you, David. Does anyone have questions for Ginger, Carol, or David? Okay, see none. We will move on to Recreation with Anna McEwen. And I'm not sure if we have someone else from Recreation, the chair?
She wasn't able to attend tonight. She's on another meeting, so I will present briefly for the commission and department. So the Recreation Commission has spent our last couple of meetings reviewing this exercise. And it certainly highlighted the collaborative relationship that we have with a handful of departments throughout town. So we're, we're really thankful to all those groups. We certainly couldn't take on this recreation venture without the support of, of groups like Public Works, Facilities, Town Manager's Office, Natural Resources, Board of Health, especially in the last year. So thank you, those groups. So we were part of 19 different action items in the plan, all of which you'll see are either in progress or completed. The action items that do show the in-progress status include things like increased accessibility in our recreation spaces, the addition of new recreation amenities, collaboration with Economic Vitality to facilitate new events and attract visitors, things of that nature. And in quite honesty, I don't know if those sorts of things will ever be fully complete. I think, you know, there's always going to be room for improving accessibility, improving communication and marketing, protecting our assets, things of that nature. So certainly welcome any questions. We do plan to incorporate a lot of these pieces from Envision Concord in our hopeful recent, or soon-to-be, Recreation Facility strategic plan that we'll be updating in the coming year. So this exercise is very timely as we look into that as well.
Thank you. I think that's a very good comment. That is true for many boards that there are certain items where we'll have continuous improvement probably forever, and they, they're never finished. So that's a very astute comment. Is anyone here from the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee? And as for the Transportation Advisory Committee, I see a number of new members. This new committee has not met yet, so I'm not going to call on you. But we're eager to get going on it. And thank you all for attending tonight. I see four or five of you are here. That's great. Does anyone have questions for Anna or about transportation? Okay, I see none. Oh, Nick, yes.
Yeah, can I, all of the
Yeah, can I, all of the committee hasn't met yet. I have some experience in transportation, having been on the Comprehensive Long Range Planning Task Force. And just one thing I want to say, in keeping with the, sort of the system's nature of the long-range plan and the need to work across the town, the whole area of transportation's incredibly complicated. And in order to do anything on it, I think it's going to require collaboration, and it's going to require compromise among different sectors of the community. And I, for an example, I live on Monument Street, which is a beautiful historic and rural street to drive up and down every day. And at the same time that I marvel at its beauty, I fear for the cyclists and very few pedestrians who attempt to walk on it. And I think as a community, it's an example of the way we're going to need to find a way to improve mobility and people's ability to get around and enjoy the town at the same time as we protect its historic and aesthetic values.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Nick. Other comments on transportation or recreation?
Hey, Terri, it's Linda. Before you move on, I noticed that the Historic Districts Commission was not on this list. And I was wondering if you intended to call on them.
Well, I know Peter Nofield is here. I don't think he has any points to make.
I don't have anything, Terri, to report.
Thank you very much, though, for attending. There are many people here who are attending who don't have specific to report tonight, and we thank all of you for listening and being part of this.
Hey, Terri. Sorry, I just, yeah, just very briefly, I, I feel, I would feel remiss if, if as a reporter of past kind of accomplishments, the Transportation Advisory Committee version 1.0, I think, did do, did, did begin discussions and on a number of issues, and, and I think set the tone for looking at multi, multimodality and, and mobility as priorities for how we approach transportation issues. So I just want to, because there was a lot of people who were residents and town staff that served in that, that have served in that committee. I want to commend them for their work as well.
Yes, thank you. So the last group is the Select Board.
Before we go to that, though, I just wanted to say that I think Peter sold himself a little bit short, because the HTC did respond on a couple of items, and they had the hundred percent completion rate, unlike any other group.
Well, that's why I didn't want to, I didn't want to talk, Matt, because we already got an A grade.
Oh.
Basically, there were these two items about expanding the local historic districts, and, you know, there, there were expansions that have been done. Of course, there's always the possibility of future. And then the idea of the Neighborhood Conservation District, they did the study. So just wanted to note both of those words.
Thank you, Matt. And that's why I thought that they should be included. Thank you.
Well, thanks, Linda. All right.
Great. Good job by the HTC. Thank you. So I will just very briefly go over the Select Board. We had eleven items that we were the lead on and many other items that we were a small part of. The one item that is complete is, as we've talked about, consider establishing a town economic development staff position. We've definitely gone over that, and that was a great accomplishment. We have many others that are in progress, almost all of them. And then we added two new ones. One is proactively strengthen town school fiscal coordination. We've heard a little bit about that tonight. And the Select Board is definitely interested in working on that. And also review and implement low-carbon considerations in municipal fleet procurement. That is another.
Actually, Terri, those two items, they're listed as new because they didn't appear in the published version of the matrix, but they were in the original. We did have two completely new ones that we added, and that's on a separate tab. And that was first of all, to research and implement the diversity, equity, and inclusion best practices in town governance. And then secondly, to plan for events celebrating the 250th anniversary of the American Revolution. Both of these are longer term and, and they were not identified or called out in the original plan.
Okay, great. Thank you for reminding me of those important initiatives. Wonderful. Does anyone have any questions for the Select Board items? Okay, so what we're going to do now is we're going to have a very brief summary and some public comment. Well, let's take public comment first, if, if there is some public comment besides the Q and A that we've already had. I don't see any right now. Let me do some summary, and then we'll ask again if there's some public comment. So first of all, we had seventy-six people on this call. That is really amazing. I want to thank everybody for giving up your time tonight and for preparing and sending in the template and for spending all the time that you do on your town board, committee, department. The citizens of Concord are really benefiting from our work, as we can see tonight, how much we've accomplished in just three years. It is really, really terrific. And we're planning to do this again in another three years. So what we want to do, we've heard a lot tonight about breaking down silos, collaborating, working together, and we want to ask all of you, go back to your board, committee, department, organization, and discuss how you can continue to collaborate. How you can make the collaboration part of your goals for the next fiscal year, FY23? How can it be part of your budget, part of your goals? Try to find creative ways to continue to break down these silos and put specific collaboration steps into your goals and budgets. So at this point, I'm looking again to see if there's any public comment. Okay, don't see any. And I want to thank Gary Kleiman and Elise Woodward again for coming out and for cheering the effort three years ago and taking us through the big ideas tonight. Want to thank Matt and Jeremy again for so many hours of work putting together those templates. And if there's no other public comment, we will take a motion to adjourn. Okay, I see Pamela Dred.
Thirteen Concord Green. I just wonder if this is the place to ask if there's any plans for a large meeting facility that could hold like town meeting for other huge citizen groups? Since we are not going to be having, I mean, because the high school isn't big enough, is it?
Who would like to take this question? Maybe Steven?
Are you, are you asking in, in the face of what, social distancing concerns, or is it just generally?
Just generally.
Oh, because, I mean, in the past, I think even when we've had town meeting, and there's been high interest articles, we found ways to accommodate everyone. You don't, they don't have to all be in the same room. You know, they can be connected via audio visual. But I don't know of a case where we literally have been unable to have, you know, the full body of citizens available to vote and deliberate.
Yeah, we have lots of options that we have, that, that existed in the past for satellite rooms during, and, you know, deputy town moderators, you know, counting votes and things like that. So we've got capacity for a, a large number of people who want to attend a meeting. So I think we feel pretty good about our ability to provide that.
I remember watching in a classroom, because we had overflowed into classrooms in addition to the gym and everywhere else.
It wasn't just town meeting, though. For example, if the League of Women Voters wants to hold a forum, where?
And I, can I just mention that we continue to pursue the possibility and our interest in the town acquiring the Concord Armory, which would be a very appropriate and very useful site for all kinds of municipal uses. And that is, that is a long-term project that we are, in which we have a continuing interest. And we will take, I think, every opportunity we can to make that facility available to the town.
Right, right. Peggy Briggs?
Yes, hi. First of all, Terri and other board members, this was an incredibly great meeting. I was also on the Long Range Playing Committee and and it, it just a fabulous follow-up and tracking, and I'm really impressed. Terri, very, very nice job managing so many people. And also with a, a different hat on, which is deputy moderator, I, I feel, well, it's not as comfy as a lot of other places. The new, newer gym at the high school adequately accommodates very large numbers of people.
Correct. Thank you. Yeah, and Peggy, all the credit goes again to Matt and Jeremy for putting this together. Really good job.
Well, it's a terrific, a terrific job on the board for following up, which is always a hard part of a plan.
Right, and all the boards and committees that actually did these action items.
Yes.
We'll be doing another meeting like this in three years, so we can start, you know, start to get to work again on some more action items.
Very nicely done. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn in that case.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Ms. Zachary.
Aye.
Ms. Bates.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, aye. We are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.